October 1st, Committee of the Whole, are there any additions or corrections of those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
No move.
Second? I have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Tree Commission, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have three vacancies. Terms begin November 8, 2024, and then November 7, 2027. We have three incumbents. The first opening is Shelley A. Strip. She's served one full term. She has applied for a second term. I'd like to nominate Shelley A. Strip for a second term.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion of second for Shelley A. Strip. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will confirm that later on in the agenda.
The second vacancy is held by, originally held by Michelle Bethune. They did not request a second term. I would like to nominate Michael Brunson for that position.
Second.
Have a motion of second for Michael Brunson. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda.
And the third vacancy was held by Algenon Coleman. They did, also did not apply for a full term, so I would like to nominate Helena Starnes for that vacancy.
Second. All right. Have a motion of second for Helena Starnes. Any further discussion or comments?
I just have one. It's a general comment. We've run through these awful quickly, and I just want folks at home and here to know that their applications were in front of us. We read them. They were all excellent. We are blessed in this community to have applications for these positions at such a high level, and I heartily endorse all three of these candidates.
Thank you. We are very blessed to have citizens that want to serve their community. Right, any other comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. I have a statement I'd like to read for the record, please, and I've given a copy to Allison for attachment. Over the past months, North Star Place Branding and Marketing developed a rebranding concept for the city. The contractor worked on the concept with input from citizens, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, leaders of the Chamber of Commerce, and the Auburn Opelika Tourism Bureau. For reasons I'll explain, I'm asking the council to direct the city staff to withhold implementation of any aspect of the concept until it is approved by a majority of the council. The council did approve a contract for a need study in development of a concept. I evidently misunderstood the process. I expected the final concept to be presented to the council, and we would approve, possibly with changes, or disapprove its implementation. I was wrong. By approving the contract, I've been told that implementation of the plan is at the discretion of the city staff. City council members have participated in two of their own individual Zoom meetings about the plan. In the first meeting, we were given the survey results. We were told that the current branding is effective, so the city does not have a perception branding problem. Because of this, I asked if the contract could be concluded with no further work. I was told we couldn't stop and approved, awarded, and in process contract. The second recent meeting was a presentation of the final concept that included a new tagline and logo. Another council person said after his presentation that a simple punctuation change could easily twist the proposed tagline into an unflattering risque description of the city. Another council person and I noticed that the focal point of the proposed logo can be confused with a variety of commercial businesses. For example, we observed a local landscaping company with a logo that is almost identical to the one being proposed for Auburn. The council approved the study in the creation of branding concept, but has not approved the final recommended design. If we don't require staff to seek our approval before implementation, it will be implemented as is at the discretion of staff. For me, this is not good enough. Citizens, through their elected representatives, need final approval of such a long-lasting, impactful, and last but not least, expensive change. The cost of developing and creating a new brand only begins with the plan. Implementation is the true cost. Tonight, I'm asking the council for a consensus, directing the city manager to outline a plan for council involvement, and to withhold implementation of any aspect of the final plan until it is reviewed in its entirety in public and approved or disapproved by the council. Thank you.
With the council's processes and procedures, normally during the Committee of the Whole, a council member would ask the city council for time at the following Committee of the Whole to have a full discussion on an item. Mr. Griswold, you have made this statement, and at the end, you are asking for the council to direct the city manager. That certainly is not what our normal processes are, so would you like to have this topic on our next city council meeting, our next Committee of the Whole, at our next city council meeting, which I think is November the 5th? Am I correct?
I think so.
I think it's three weeks from now. Is that what you would, you would like, Mr. Griswold?
I would like to have the, a plan outlined for council participation. If, if we have to do that next Committee of the Whole, that's fine. I'll leave it up to you and the city manager on how to proceed.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Griswold is asking, if we follow our procedures here, that during the next Committee of the Whole on November the 5th, that the council will have a fuller discussion of this, and ultimately, potentially ask the city manager through that discussion to outline a plan for council involvement and to withhold any implementation. So, this is not a time for deliberation from the council, but this is time, is the council willing to set aside time in three weeks during the Committee of the Whole to have a full discussion of this? Okay? All right, so that's what we'll be deciding right now. So, all in favor of setting aside time at the November 5th meeting during the Committee of the Whole to discuss this branding question, please raise your hand. That's three. All opposed? Okay.
I'm not opposed or unopposed. I think it's, I understand where Mr. Griswold is coming from, but I think this has been discussed enough. I mean, not, not against, not against you, Kelly, but, so I don't, we have meetings we want to.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, questions on tonight's agenda?
What was the outcome?
It was four.
Three in favor doing that, four opposed to that, and one abstention. I take it, Mr. Dawson?
I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. Okay, all right. Okay, questions on tonight's agenda? Any questions related to tonight's agenda? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think some folks may be here tonight with some concerns about a project that they thought and was legally advertised to be on this agenda, about 606 Pitts Avenue. The applicant called last week and withdrew their application, so it never made the agenda, so it's not on the agendas that you, you have before you. So, if you're here for any reason for that item, it will not be heard tonight because it is no longer before anyone, and if, if the applicant wants to bring it back, it has to go back to Planning Commission and start again.
Okay, all right. So, if you are here with an item that you believe might be on the council agenda tonight related to a development on Pitts Avenue, we will not be hearing that tonight. It is not on our agenda.
So, in other words, for-
I did receive a very well-written letter over the weekend, which I appreciate.
For the folks that are here for that, what that means is you don't have to worry about it unless you get notified again that it comes up again. It's, it's over with for now.
And you're all welcome to stay and enjoy our meeting. Thank you for that clarification. All right, anything else from the city manager related to tonight's agenda? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn tonight's Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
All right, tonight's Committee of the Whole is adjourned. It is after 6 o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started with our regular agenda. Our call to order, tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for October the 15th, 2024. We welcome all of you who are joined us live here tonight. Welcome those that are listening on WANI and that are watching through our streaming services. Thank you for participating in your local government. Allison with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Coblins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons. Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Earlier tonight, during the Committee of the Whole, the city council appointed three members of our community to the Tree Commission: Shelley A. Strip, Michael Brunson, and Elena Starnes, and we look forward to them joining our Tree Commission and getting started. Their terms will begin in the month of November, and they are three-year terms that go through 2027. We also had a discussion from Councilman Griswold about the efforts, the recent marketing and branding efforts that the city has undergone, and desire to, to delay those efforts and to have a further discussion. Ultimately, the city council has decided not to have that further discussion at the next meeting, and that carries us forth. So, we'll move, go ahead and move into announcements. I do have a number of things I'd like to make announcement, have an announcement tonight. I want to thank Allison and your guidance and leadership with the Citizens Academy. We appreciate everything that you do to lead that group of people. They recently had their graduation. I think it was around 20 citizens that participated, and they are, they were a fired-up group, and we look forward to their continued efforts within our city. But I appreciate their sacrifices from their jobs and their families and their other activities to participate in that. And coming up in the next couple of weeks, we've got some outstanding opportunities related to activities and nonprofits in our community and, and great causes, and I just want to make everybody aware, this Sunday is the Alzheimer's Walk that will start on campus in the middle of the afternoon. This coming Saturday is the Deaf Festival that will support the Alabama Deaf and Blind. The Alternative Baseball League, the Auburn Pilots, will play their first game Saturday at 12 o'clock at Duck Sanford Park. The Exceptional Foundation has their annual tailgate fundraiser a week from Saturday, and I just appreciate all of those people and what they do. And Alabama Rural Ministry will have their No More Shacks fundraiser. I actually will be joining them on Halloween, but they'll be out there for a few days raising money for their outstanding ministry. I want to say thank you to all of our departments who, who made Household Hazardous Waste Day a success again. That's a critical and key time for our community to be able to dispose of those things that we can't throw in our trash can and can't put out by the street. And so, I appreciate all the citizens that participate in that and all the extra effort that goes into making Household Hazardous Waste Day a success each year. Don't forget, on Halloween night, Downtown Trick or Treat will occur in our community again, and we'll be closing off the streets in downtown to allow children from our area to participate in trick-or-treating. And I appreciate our Parks and Rec staff, our Public Safety staff, our Public Works staff, and the downtown merchants who all pitch in to make that a, a great, great event. And I want to say how excited I am about the new aviation maintenance hangar groundbreaking that will be occurring soon at the Auburn University Airport. This is in conjunction with Southern Union as they develop an airplane maintenance program, and this will be a building that will house that program, and it's a part of our modern community as we, we train people to, train citizens and students to understand how to fix airplanes, which are a bigger and bigger part of our community. And that will get all my announcements. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to announce tonight?
You said the Downtown Trick or Treat is what date?
Halloween.
Oh, Halloween night, okay.
Yeah, Halloween night.
Okay, I do, I have an announcement.
Sure.
Also, this Sunday before Halloween, which is October 27th, we will be giving a fall festival for our children at the Sam Harris Park, and it starts at 2 o'clock, and the public is invited. It's for children, adults, or whoever, and we'll just be giving away treats to, to the kids for Halloween.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward to Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all. Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon.
Busy week, so I'll get right into it. Yesterday, the SGA Cabinet and executive team were welcomed by the Recreation and Wellness staff for a tour of their facility. During the visit, we discussed future developments for the center and how we can best accommodate our growing student population. We're grateful for their hospitality and their continued collaboration with the student body. Last night, SGA Senate approved the spring elections timeline for a new bill that amends election procedures. Elections will now be standardized, used, to use instant runoffs and ranked choice voting. The SGA President, Vice President, and Treasurer have typically used this in, in the past, but it will now be standardized for Miss Homecoming and for Miss Auburn elections. Heyday is tomorrow. For those who don't know, this tradition began in 1947 as a way to create a welcoming environment for World War I veterans returning to campus. It has since evolved into one of Auburn's most beloved yearly events. Students are encouraged to wear name tags, greet one another, and start conversations with people that they may not know. The day is packed with fun activities, including a catered lunch, an inflatable obstacle course, and a pep rally on the campus green. Auburn Advancement is going to be live streaming the event hosted by Miss Auburn starting at 11:45 on YouTube, Facebook, and on the Auburn app if you are interested. Tip-Off at Tumors is also this Thursday. I know this has been of quite a bit of discussion here in the city council, but I do want to echo some of the things that were discussed last week. This is a really tremendous opportunity for the Auburn Athletics Department to promote their men and women's basketball teams for the upcoming season. The tip-off is going to be at 5:30, or the event will kick off at 5:30 Thursday afternoon with the opening of Tip-Off Market, which is set to feature a multitude of our downtown merchants. Basketball festivities will kick off at 6:30 at the court constructed at the intersection of Magnolia and South College. Following this event, there will be an autograph section at South College Street with all the basketball players, and then at 8:15, there will be multi-platinum singer-songwriter Cole Swindell will take the stage for a 75-minute performance. I don't even want to think about what the logistics of putting this on are, but I know that our public servants here have done a really great job of, of making sure that that would be safe for all of us, so we're certainly thankful for them. And finally, I did want to share a statement from Shane Enriquez, who's the President of the American Pharmacists Association, ASP. He, he wanted me to share, "Thank you, Mayor Anders, for visiting campus yesterday to meet with the American Pharmacists Association at the Harrison College of Pharmacy and for signing a proclamation recognizing October as American Pharmacist Month. We truly appreciate your support and acknowledgement of the contributions pharmacists make to our community. Your visit meant a great deal to us, and it was a wonderful way to kick off this important month of celebration and advocacy for our profession." So, that's all from me. Thank you, guys, and War Eagle.
Thank you. We appreciate it. It was great to be with our pharmacy school yesterday, and I appreciate their invitation each year. What a great group of kids that are going through a tough curriculum to serve their communities in the future, so very proud to be there. Okay, at this time, is Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda? Remember, this is only items on tonight's agenda. We do have a couple of public hearings, a number of public hearings tonight. If you'd like to address city council about an item that has a public hearing attached, we'd ask that you save your comments for that time. But anything else on the agenda, if you'd like to speak to the city council, now would be your time. You all have five minutes. We ask that you come forward to the podium and give us your name and address.
Good evening. Brett Basquen with the Forsyth Group representing the Hansons on the annexations tonight. The annexations don't require a public hearing, so I just wanted to let you all know that we're here to answer any questions. I know there's been some questions and concerns, but if there's any questions y'all have on the history of the property, the future plans, which is really just 19 large lot residential lots out there, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Other than that, just want to make myself available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basquen. Certainly, when we're discussing this, if we need you, we'll ask you to come back. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead with city manager communications.
Mayor and our city manager's communications, I'll just remind, in case anybody's left over, that there is no agenda item for a rezoning for 606 Pitts Avenue tonight. Other than that, if you're ready for the consent agenda, does any council member have an item they wish to remove from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, sir.
Item eight. D.
D, eight D?
D as in dog.
Okay, all right. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. Eight D two.
Eight.
Eight D five.
Hold on, hold on, eight.
Eight E.
E, you mean?
Eight. E two.
Okay.
Eight E five. Eight E seven.
All right, echo. Anyone else?
Two, five, and seven?
Yes, two, five, seven, yes.
Okay.
All right, eight D.
Item eight D authorizes the renaming of a portion of Lee Road 677 within the Auburn city limits to Woodward Oaks Trail.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Connie?
Okay. I just wanted to ask the question and just make it plain to everybody that's listening. Street renaming, and I see that, you know, this street's going to be renamed on Lee Road 667 to Woodward Oaks Trail. So, I just want to understand street renaming.
So, for, often we do it for two things. One, people come into the city limits, so they can't live on a Lee Road anymore. It has, it gets a street name. Or two, we have an emergency 911 conflict where we've had to rename some streets. Those are the two main ways that that happens. Once in a great while ceremoniously, something is, some name is changed, but that's extremely rare. So, in this instance, there was, there were some calls to the planning department from the schools about confusion as to whether or not somebody that lives at Lee Road 677 was in the city limits or not. They were. And so, it's a staff-initiated road name change, because for the portion of Lee Road 677 that's in the city limits, it needs to be named something in the city, Woodward Oaks Trail. And then the other things that are out of the city limits will still be Lee Road 677.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, how did you come up with the name Woodward Oaks Trail? I mean?
Yeah, so, so kind, kind of like city manager was referencing, so the street renaming and all the names in the city, I guess it was a public safety initiative to identify road names that were similar to others, and then in order to save time in, in emergency situations, names, names of road have to be distinctly different kind of going forward, and so that's a continuation of, of an existing road that's already out there.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, in new subdivisions, the developer typically names those roads, and then they have to go through the vetting process per what the planning director said to make sure we don't have a emergency 911 conflict.
You good, Ms. Taylor?
Well, well, so would that stand true with inside the city limits as far as renaming streets? Or is that a different process?
Yeah, we typically don't rename streets unless we've got a 911 purpose. And so, ceremoniously, once in a great while, it happens, but you had asked me about one previously, and that street is named for somebody that was historically significant, and the two streets didn't previously connect until Martin Luther King Drive was relocated. It used to tee into Donahue, right adjacent to the railroad tracks. It got relocated and aligned with Bragg, and that's why they're named two different things. And in the, the street name history book of Auburn, there's a lot of discussion about Mr. Bragg and, and his involvement with the university and Alabama Power and some other things. And so typically, one of the things the council has looked at with street renaming is when you have a lot of businesses and residences that are already addressed off of something, it's often not changed, but that ultimately is up to the city council. Yep.
Any other questions? Have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 82 authorizes the purchase of one Bobcat 2024 mini-track loader from Bobcat of Dothen for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $44,794.45.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Griswold?
Thank you. I understand this is to purchase one in lieu of having to continue to rent one.
Correct.
How often do we have to rent one?
Frequently, from my understanding, I'll have our Parks and Recreation Director address that and a little bit about what this does for us.
For example, we're renting one right now. We, it gets us in tight spots anywhere from working in the cemeteries to working in our parks. Right now, it helps us with trail maintenance, and we use it regularly.
The trails at Kiesel, at Town Creek Park, at Deneas, at so on, we're constantly out with a smaller track hoe because of the, of the width of the trails.
Absolutely.
Has a cost analysis been done as terms of renting, continuing to rent one versus buying one for $44,000?
Well, $44,000 will last over time, and this was in the budget as proposed. Those things were vetted internally, and I was satisfied with the responses I got about that.
And it's, it's used, oh, excuse me, almost continuously, is what you're telling me?
Yes, on a very regular basis.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 85 authorizes the purchase of one 2024 Ford F-150 four-by-four truck from Stivers Ford Lincoln for the fire department in the amount of $47,798.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Mr. Griswold?
Yeah, I, I just question having to buy additional vehicles when there's so many around town, that's all. I'm not going to support purchase of new vehicles, unless they're replacing something else.
Ms. Crouch, this is for an additional captain. Is that?
This has to do with our EMS operations. We, we are now fully fledged paramedics in a lot of ways, and we're running a lot of EMS items, and we have, with our growth, have to add personnel and leadership personnel in our departments, and this is for that purpose as well as general departmental use. Public Safety Director Matthews may have more to add.
That's correct. This is for our EMS officer. He is a captain oversight over the ALS program. This will be-
Advanced Life Support.
Advanced Life Support, yes.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Excuse me, one aye.
Item 87 authorizes the purchase of four 2024 Ford F-150 Super Crew four-by-two pickup trucks from Stivers Ford Lincoln in the amount of $41,337 each, or $165,348 in total.
Second.
Motion of second. Mr. Griswold?
Yeah, I'd like to divide the issue, please, and we'll consider the two for the cemetery separately from the two for Parks and Recreation.
You need to move to divide the question.
I move to divide the question.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion of second to divide the question. Mr. Griswold, turn it back over.
Do we need to vote on that motion?
Yes, you do.
Okay, need to vote on that motion. So, all in favor of dividing the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I certainly agree that the two for the cemetery make a lot of sense in replacing full-size dump trucks. So, on that particular one, I'm ready to vote, and y'all are.
All right, go ahead and vote on that.
I suppose, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, all in favor of the first two pickup trucks, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Okay, and the, the second item, the two for Parks and Recreation, I have the same reservation as, as previously, that purchasing new vehicles, when we have an awful lot of them just sitting around sometimes, that makes sense to me, so.
As your memo states, the aquatics personnel, there are two. One was added with the Lake Wilmore project. That two full-time personnel have no vehicle. They must transport chemicals all over the city, and so they have been borrowing an SUV, which isn't the wisest thing to do. So, that's two people, one vehicle. Lake Wilmore has a pool. We're adding a splash pad at Boykin, and we have the Sanford Pool. The other vehicle is for, we have to have maintenance personnel out at Lake Wilmore since we're adding four multipurpose fields and a gigantic facility. So, that vehicle is for their, the purpose of the additional crew that we're adding at Lake Wilmore. So, again, growth and expansion causes need for equipment and people.
There was one other point you made, I think, at another time. You said that the chemicals needed to not be carried in an SUV.
That's correct. That's, that would be the preference, you know? It's not nice rolling with the windows down and, and so on. But the SUV, again, is borrowed from another staff member and not that assigned to either person that will be working with our aquatics.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I really would like to see them getting more vehicles, because I went out, was working narcotics for the city in 1990 through 2003. We actually had to use our personal vehicle in law enforcement. We'd get a radio put in it, because we didn't have anything to drive. The only way we got something to drive was we got to seize the car, seize the cash to pay for the car. So, the city's come a long ways, and I'm frankly glad to see it.
Gee, anyone else? All right, we've got a motion of second to approve the two vehicle purchases for Parks and Rec. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And the motion carries. Now, I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Is that moved?
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved.
Under ordinances, item 9A establishes a no-parking zone along the north and east sides of Warrior Court. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, any discussion or questions from the council?
The idea is to paint a yellow line as indicated in the drawing here all the way around Warrior Court and have parking not on that side, so that you'll be able to get emergency vehicles through there.
Yes, sir. We've had some trouble with that, and we also received numerous complaints about it at, at times of day. I had mentioned again in a packet meeting, there was not that long ago an accident at Warrior and Bragg, and another ensuing accident at College and Bragg, and we needed to get emergency equipment up and down this road, and it was nearly impossible. And so, that is a request of the Public Safety Director, along with Police Chief and Fire Chief.
All right, any further questions?
Yeah, I thoroughly support this. I know Tavern of the Tracks right there. I know Tavern of the Tracks right there, especially in the evenings, the, the road gets congested with vehicles on both sides.
Yes.
Good idea.
Yep, totally agree. Thank you. All right, with the roll call, Allison?
Hoblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B1 is a request from Scott Hanson and Sarah Hendricks to annex approximately three acres of property located in the 2600 block of Lee Road 56, also known as Wimberly Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its October 10th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll lend you the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion to second. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, is there any discussion or comments?
A question, if I may. This is not a new piece of property. This is a piece of property that's, that we're gonna look at again tonight in another, in the, in the item that files this. This is not, this is part of the whole, is that correct? The Hanson?
No, it's not part of the whole. It's a, it's a piece that's being annexed to get to another piece, to get to a third piece, to make it eligible for annexation. The next two pieces are combined in one application. So this is a means to annex property into the city by, you have to have contiguity of the city limits and by our annexation policy, and it complies. That's how they are achieving it.
And this will have access off Wimberly Road?
This particular parcel does, but from a development standpoint, Justice, it's not the intent to develop this piece at this time.
Yeah, correct.
I've got a couple of questions that relate to the, both, both of these items on our agenda tonight. Ms. Crouch, and you might need to defer these to some of your staff, but, so Mr. Basquelin said 19 homes. What does that do for traffic? Do we study traffic under that? I know we've got some, I mean, 14 is not under our purview that far out, as well as Wire Road. Are we good with the roads out there that will be supporting these homes?
Well, Councilman Dawson's asked a number of times, this is his word, about, you know, where are we with expansion plans for 14 and/or Wire Road? Correct. 14 is a state highway. Wire Road's not directly under our control. City Engineer Fraser, it's under county control. But at this time, the city has made no plans to widen either one. Allison, do you have more to add about traffic?
Yeah, this development in and of itself does not warrant a traffic study. Our threshold is 70 dwelling units for single families, but it could have a cumulative effect if there are more annexations in the area. We would need to look at Willis Turk, 14, as well as Wire Road.
If there were to be more, more annexations in the future, and those roads needed to be upgraded, whose responsibility would that be?
Right now, Willis Turk is a county road, but I think as we've talked a little bit here, the more we annex roads that, or annex property on both sides, both sides of a street, at some point, those roads will be transferred to the city for perpetual maintenance from Lee County. So right now, it's, it's Lee County's responsibility.
It's their responsibility ultimately than that becomes when they're transferred to the city, some negotiation between us and them, and ultimately become the city's responsibility if city development is causing the need for widening, if there are no development agreements triggered.
This was listed as a medium priority for annexation. Can you talk about why, how we graded it as medium?
Yeah, so, so we, we looked at it as, as a staff this past week, and we determined that it needs to be relooked at, I think, just kind of with the development, and I think kind of the transition that we're going through, going through right now as a city, that that's something that we probably need to relook at and kind of recategorize the different prioritizations of different pieces in the optimal boundary currently that aren't in the city.
What drove it to be medium priority before you met again?
Yeah, I think just kind of with the, with, I think, the trend at the time, just kind of like when the, when that was determined, just as there was a lot of pressure out there in that area, and it made sense, just kind of off of Wimberly Road, since everything, since the optimal boundary extends quite a ways past that. This isn't, at that time, that was not perceived as out of fringes. And I think kind of now, I think there's a shift, just kind of in development, and I think kind of the opinions around it.
How much, if, if both of these were to be brought into the city, how much acreage are we looking at that will be contiguous to these two properties that could potentially petition the city for annexation?
Ms. Cummings?
Is there a roundabout figure?
I think you had looked at that.
Yeah, I think initially, there would be several hundred acres that would become contiguous directly to, including all these, if you included all these parcels that we were talking about, this one and the subsequent request. Ultimately, I mean, it's, it could be anywhere from 15 to 2,000 acres that could, you know, potentially become contiguous over time after that. So it really opens up that total Western corridor.
This property or not, every time a piece is annexed, anything contiguous to it, this is citywide, then becomes fair game, and then the things contiguous to that, and so on and so forth. So one of the things, you guys have been studying the land use plan and the optimal boundary a little bit. Planning Commission's working through that. You haven't seen it, and this is just greater discussion. You had some of this about a dare subdivision down off of Moore's Mill, and it's back to annexation policies and priorities and where this sits for you.
Ms. Crouch, where are we as far as that, that study of optimal boundary, future annexation, future land use?
Our planning director will.
Are we imminent as far as coming back together and seeing something?
Yeah, that is correct. So it will be published, like the future land use plan and the proposed updates to the comprehensive plan will be published for Legals this Friday. So, so it'll go to the paper this Friday, and it'll be published next Thursday.
Planning Commission in November.
Yep.
Then that means that rolls to you sometime in December, probably the second meeting, either the first or second meeting in December, depending on how dates fall.
Annexations all stand on their own, correct? I mean, city council has the purview to approve an annexation, and right next door, they have the purview to not approve an annexation.
Correct, they're discretionary. There is no statutory, it's no, it's not a property right of somebody to be annexed.
On face value, 19 houses, I'm sure it's gonna be a beautiful neighborhood. I have no problem with that. I just, for the council's, you know, I'm just, my concern is, are we ready for Western Auburn to, to open up and expand? Is, is our city ready for that? Are our roads ready for that? Or is our infrastructure ready for that? Is our school system ready for that? Those are decisions we just need to consider. On the surface, I'm sure this will be a beautiful neighborhood, without question. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm in support of this. I feel like 19 houses is something that, they tried before to get it annexed, and I felt like it was too many units, but I think certainly this is something that would be attracted to the city. And I don't, I didn't like the intersection, the Willis Road and Wire Road, I think is dangerous. At some point, it's going to be looked at. And Highway 14, the railroad tracks is dangerous, but I don't think we can tell these folks that can't develop their property just because our intersections are not quite, quite right. And I told Mr. Hanson before, if it was less homes, I could support it, and I'm certainly gonna support it, and I hope the rest of the council will, too.
So this evening, we're looking at the annexations, but we don't have a, a plan other than just annexing, I mean, tonight's actions are strictly annexation, correct? There's not been a request?
It's just annexation, yeah. You won't see the subdivision unless, you know, until dedication of easements and right of way.
Yeah, that's correct.
But it's coming in rural residential, right?
Rural, the rural zone automatically is applied when annexed. And so they can do anything in rural once annexed.
And he's told this is 19?
Their plan is for 19 houses right now.
19 houses, yeah. Even though it's, the next item is 108 acres, that's greater than 19.
Yeah. I can print that on the plat.
It's 36. Maximum.
Yeah, oh yeah, so, yeah, so that's correct. So there, the minimum, even though the minimum is three acres, there's a lot of larger lots than three, and so, and so it doesn't.
So you've seen a, a plat, a proposed plat?
Yes, and so there was a preliminary plat that came in under the old subdivision regs before the subdivision regs changed. And then they, so they came in with the preliminary plat, and then now they're coming with the petition to annex.
Okay.
Which you can, because it's three-acre lots, they're fine to do so in the county.
The only way it can change is we have to vote on it.
No, sir. Once this comes in, it comes in as rural, and they can do anything. I'm not saying they're going to do that, but anything the rural zone allows can be done here.
Doesn't allow them to put 100 houses on it.
No, it allows them three-acre lots at the moment, without a zoning change.
36.
So they could put 36. Yeah, I mean, that's just.
They could, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they've, they've given us no such indication, but yeah.
And Mr. Basquelin said tonight it was 19.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions in the council? Mr. Basquelin has offered, do we have any questions for him? He could certainly step back up and, okay. Allison, with the roll call?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 9B2 is a request from Hanson Grimes Land LLC to annex approximately 108 acres of property located at 943 Lee Road 57, also known as Willis Turk Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its October 10th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll lend you the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, any comments or questions? Yes, sir, Ms. Mormon.
Point of clarification, it was indicated earlier that there were three lots, contiguous, three lots, and is this, are we now considering the other two?
Yeah, there's just a little, little piece, a strip. I'll have the planning director explain.
Yes, so, so, like we, like we talked about earlier, you must have contiguity to annex into the city, and so there are three ways of obtaining it. And the larger 108-acre piece is using the third way, which is a sliver. It cannot be any longer than, I think it's 700, 750 feet, and it has to be 60 feet wide. And I think the strip that they're using is 660 feet and 60 feet wide. It's about .9 acres. So they're using a sliver. It's been done all over town, and they're using that sliver to connect to the three-acre piece that y'all just annexed to annex 108-acre piece in.
I understand all that, but when we, we've looked at this now two other times, has this been part of the consideration, the two other times that we've looked at?
I'm not sure.
And I wasn't either.
Before him.
And I apologize for asking you that question. It wasn't fair, but does anybody who's been on the council longer than me or any staff want to comment on that?
I can't honestly remember.
Scott Cummings, yeah.
So the initial plan that, that we looked at, I guess years, years ago.
18 and 23, I think.
Yeah, the, that actually included some of the parcels that are part of this annexation that went all the way over, you know, to, to, to the road to where they could get the, you know, to get the continuity. So it was, that was actually part of a bigger development. This is a smaller parcel. They're just looking at that one, 100-acre parcel. And, you know, because they're bringing in across two parcels, the same owner owns both parcels, so that's, that's why they're doing it the way they're doing it. But it's a smaller piece than what was looked at previously.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Our previous concerns, when we look at this, was that we weren't ready, as you mentioned just a minute ago, and just asked the question, what's changed since we, our determination that we were not ready to move out that direction?
So I, I'm not sure that this, that that sentiment has changed. I know from an application standpoint, the past, present, the past case was a lot denser. This is only ruled three-acre minimum lots. And so the density, and I think the dwelling units are drastically different. The application itself has changed, but I don't know if the sentiments have changed kind of around West Auburn with the implications would be of opening the West corridor up.
I think also a difference is the volume of applications that we're seeing in the entire optimal boundary. You're facing several thousand acres over the next four to six months that may be asked to come in, and that is why the staff is, is saying what we're saying. It's not about this development. It is the totality of annexations, you need to be aware. They will impact our services even at three-acre lots. If, if 3,000 acres develops at three-acre lots, that's still, you know, a lot of houses over time. And when we're telling you have eight to 10,000 dwelling unit, dwelling units already approved that have yet to be built, we just want you to be aware of what's going on around you that staff sees that you may not see. This is a fine development, meets our criteria. It's not what we're saying, but every time we annex 100 acres, it's, it's 100 acres. And those homes are eligible for all of our services and, that are out there. Auburn Water Works Board is not out there, and they're eligible to put kids in Auburn City Schools, and you just need to have awareness. That's all.
Who does provide water service out there since the City of Auburn doesn't?
Luchapoca.
Have there, has there been coordination with them on this project?
Yeah, so, so normally, like, when we talk about all of this in the pre-op meetings, there are several water providers that don't, that step in the gap, like when the City of Auburn doesn't provide water, and on this, on this side of the city, it is Luchapoca Water.
Yeah, it's their service territory. We can't provide service there, so.
And with this limited number of homes, I don't really have a problem with septic systems, but if it were to go to the maximum allowable, 36, you say?
Mm-hmm.
Then that may be a problem for me.
And no, they're still allowed at the three-acre minimum, Keith, to have the septic systems.
That's correct. The three-acre lot size is compliant with septic systems.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Allison, roll call?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9B3 is a request from LR72 Development LLC to annex approximately 3.79 acres of property located at the northwest corner of East Farmville Road, also known as Lee Road 72 and US Highway 280. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'd like to deny unanimous consent.
But that item will automatically come up at the November 5th meeting.
Thank you.
All right, item 9C1, I, is a request to rezone the same 3.79 acres. I'll go ahead and introduce it, the preference would be to just deny unanimous consent, so it tracks. So item 9C1 is a request to rezone approximately 3.79 acres, property located at the northwest corner of East Farmville Road and US Highway 280 from rural to development district housing. Planning commission unanimously recommended this request. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll deny unanimous consent.
That will automatically come up, including public hearing, at the November 5th meeting. Item 9C2 is a request to apply the planned development district designation to the same said property, but it's 14.17 acres of property, because it's combined with another piece, this was unanimously approved at the request, at the applicant's request by planning commission, September 12th. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll deny unanimous consent.
All right, that item will also be November 5th with a public hearing. Item 9D authorizes the issuance of the $40,590,000 in general obligation warrants, Series 2024, for various public capital improvements to include the Lake Wilmore Community Center, Lake Wilmore Multipurpose Fields, and the Boykin Donahue Campus improvements.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
There's no need for unanimous consent on that, is there, Allison? It wasn't, wasn't marked. Yeah, I didn't see it marked. Okay, sorry, sorry, Beth, go ahead.
Okay, I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward and vote on this this evening. Seeing and hearing none, I know our representatives from Fraser Lanier are here, and I would ask Mr. Young, if you would, council's pleasure, make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
First of all, on behalf of Fraser Lanier, and I know Rod Cantor from Bradley A-Rent, thank you all for your continued trust that you've placed in our two firms. I'd like to give you a quick overview of how the sale went, and then I'd like to also make some comments about the ratings that you received from Moody's Investor Service and Standard Poor's Corporation. We had an excellent sale. We went into the market Thursday a week ago at interest rates of 3.68%, and because of your excellent credit, we were able to lower those rates to 3.64%. So we were excited about the way that your issue was received. As it turned out Friday, some rather disturbing news about renewed inflation came out and interest rates went up. So Megan and Allison and Heidi could not have picked a better day to go into the market than the one that they did. And they're not at the lowest interest rates we've seen this calendar year, they're sure pretty darn close to it. So that, and the issue will close on the 22nd, and we'll wire the funds in to be used for the purposes which Megan was, was outlining. Your ratings came back in, in excellent form. Moody's maintained their AA2 rating, Standard Poor's maintained their AA+ rating. I want to thank the mayor and Megan and Allison and Heidi for responding to a number of questions and comments in writing before we ever had the, the rating call. The responses were right to the point, they brought up no questions during our call with either of the agencies, which lasted about an hour and a half with each one. The stress really in, in this conversation was a deep dive into what's going on in Auburn and how are you managing it. And one of the things that, that the mayor and Megan hit on was the excellent staff that you all have here at the department head level, as well as everyone working in the city, trying to give, make sure that the citizens get the most bang for their buck. And that clearly came through in the responses and the comments that they made. The fact that you, you've had wonderful growth on the industrial and commercial side, that Phillips Group has done a great job of making sure that no one industry is the boy dog in town, and if they go out of business, you're in trouble with a lot of unemployment. I was taken, I took it as a really high compliment when Katie Vasquez, who is head of Alabama Credits for Standard Poor's, called with the AA+ confirmation, she took time to express the appreciation for the presentation that the mayor and Megan and Allison and Heidi provided. She said that she spent a lot of time in the committee meeting discussing the excellent management techniques that are employed here in the city. So if you're like me, sometimes you forget about the things that seem to go along real well and don't appreciate those. The folks out of town will mighty impressed with the way that you all are running the railroad here in Auburn. So you've got a lot to be proud of, and my preacher told me pride is not considered a virtue in the New Testament, but I will say that I was proud of the ratings that you all got, and it, they, your team did an excellent job. We couldn't have been asked for any better support from our perspective. And I'd be delighted to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Are you saying other communities our size maintaining their rating levels in, in the same fashion that we have?
Well, first of all, you're among the highest in the state of Alabama, and really, the, the next step is AAA for y'all. So, and that is extremely difficult to attain, particularly for a city of your size. The rating agencies believe that a bigger city has more resiliency against the downturn in the economy. I don't necessarily agree with that, but they make the rules themselves. But there are very, very few cities that are maintaining these kinds of high ratings. And one of the things that we're seeing around the state right now is that sales tax collections as a percentage are leveling off. That's not the case here in Auburn. So you're bucking the trends in the right way.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Young. We appreciate your support and help. We are certainly proud of our staff, Allison. You and your staff did a great job. Anyone else have any other questions for the city manager? All right, Allison, roll call.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Hoblins.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
All right, resolutions. Item 10A1 needs to be postponed as it is a conditional use request for the Farmville Mixed Use Project. You denied unanimous consent on the other items, and I recommend you also move this item in the public hearing to the November 5th meeting.
Move to a date certain of November 5th for Farmville Mixed Use 10A1, along with the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor of moving this item to November 5th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a conditional use request for a performance residential development cottage homes and commercial entertainment uses for property located near the intersection of Judd Avenue and Richland Road in the Redevelopment District zoning district. The plan, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 12th meeting. A public hearing is required. This is known as Judd Avenue Mixed Use.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion a second, this time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to talk to the city council about this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council.
My name is Ernest Griggs. I'm the pastor of Church of God by Faith, which is located at 598 Richland Road, here in the great city of Auburn, Alabama, where we always say war eagle. I just don't use the other word being a preacher. This property is, is an L shape around our church, right in as I saw. Looks bad. Few years ago, we had a tree that fell from that property that kissed our church. It wasn't a good kiss, it was a Judas kiss because it tore apart the church. And we couldn't find the property owners to, to get them to pay for it, so State Farm had to do their job. The property is sitting vacant for 25 years. They were actually owned, both parcels of property were actually owned by former members of our church, which are all, all dead and gone, so this property was, we couldn't find them at that time. The heirs are all out of state, but we were approached by Palmer Development. They came and sat down and talked with us as a church body, and told us what they proposed and asked us what we would like, and which has never been done before. And we would love to have the property developed there, we love to have the neighbors. It gives us an opportunity, as I told the planning board, planning commission, whatever you call them, that we would love to have the opportunity as believers in Christ to do what the Bible says, "Go ye therefore, make disciples." And all we would have to do is just go right across the parking lot. Instead of having to drive around, telling you whether to see the cross, whether to go across the sea, we would go there and invite those people to be a part of our church community. And I said in a meeting, and I'm not racist, but I, 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 I'm a black pastor that pastors a white church that's all black. And I'd like to see faces there other than mine. I'd like to see, there are plenty of personalities that is not mine, but I'd like to see some real blonde hair. Not something that was bought over at the store we have. In other words, I like to see my church more mixed, and this gives us an opportunity as a, as a Christian family, and also, not only just for church, but for other opportunities for the youth. We've got great youth programs there, opportunities to help for counseling. We even do financial counseling, and, and they're just needed in a time like this, when, you know, when your chain gets strange and money get funny. So we offer a lot of things there at our church, that's not just quote church, that will help the community. I've been here in Auburn since 1980. I actually live in the metropolis of Low Chopoca, but, but, which is almost Auburn now. But we would love, as a church group, we, we agree with it. We have, we've had no problems with Piper Glen, there were 65 zones behind us. We've gone, we've interacted with those people. The only problem I had was a dog came and pooped. And they didn't clean it up, but when I found the owner and saw him out to walking the dog, I pointed him to where a great place he can go walk his dog, other than on our church property. He was a student and just didn't know. So, but other than that, we'd love to have that, we'd love to have the approval of, of the council for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Who'll be next?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the council, name and address?
Please.
Andrew Palmer, 118 Cecil Lane. I won't get as many laughs as Pastor Griggs, but I just wanted to come up tonight and thank Ms. Connie for setting up that Ward 1 meeting that bared a lot of fruits. And it bared a lot, a lot of fruits outside of just real estate development, what type of commercial and residential. I mean, it spoke to the, the, the heart of what's most important, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate Councilman Griswold for being there and all the members of the community, and, and we're just, we're excited for this opportunity. We're, we're grateful, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I'll ask a short one, if that's all right.
Go ahead with the short one.
Because I want to yield a lot of time to my colleague. So this won't be a private club, it won't be a funeral home. What do you think it will be?
The, the, the commercial piece of this.
Right.
Okay.
Just general.
Mr. Palmer, do you have something you'd like to respond with?
I need to clarify something on that. There will be absolutely no private club, and it was a grave mistake that that even entered the application to the planning department. I, I apologize for that. So we're looking at, at a lot of the discussion at the, at the meeting, we were, you know, we believe a cafe, coffee, sandwich shop, something that can anchor the development, that can truly be a benefit. We're, we're going to have interest from your, you know, a hair salon, a nail salon, and other uses like that, but that's what we envision for the property. And we, we are in no rush to make a bad decision. We are going to wait for the right tenants to come, for the property to be a benefit to the area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Connie.
Good. All right, Ms. Taylor?
As Mr. Palmer stated, there was a community meeting held last week about this particular development, and I don't really think that the residents have a problem with the development, but there was some issues or some questions that came about, about the development. One of the main concerns from the residents and the community was traffic flow. And Richland Road has really, really changed, and a lot of people use Richland Road now as a cut through to get to the other side of Richland Road. Okay, and, and I think, and I, and I expressed this in the meeting, that the reason that happened is because if you're coming off of 14, and I'm not good with northwest, south, and all that kind of stuff, but if you're coming off of 14 coming from Low Chopoca, and you get, just before you get to the bridge, and you make, you make that turnoff to get back onto Shook Jordan, there's rails in the road right there, and that, 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 even with me, that's, that's a little dangerous. So I prefer to go down under the bridge and cut off to Richland Road and get to the traffic light where it's more safer. So there's a influx of traffic that's coming through Richland Road. Now, I travel Richland Road, and sometimes I just get out in my ward, and I just want to just look around and see what's going on, and just see how quiet the neighborhood or how noisy the neighborhood seems. And every time I go through Richland Road, traffic is used heavily on that road at a speed that you would not believe. So most of the residents, especially those on Richland Road, is concerned about how fast the cars are traveling on Richland Road, and they're asking for some type of calming device. And especially now that if we, if, if this get approved, and you're putting a commercial development there, so that's going to, that's going to bring in more traffic, more speeding, more cars. So I would like to know from Megan, your staff, or whatever, is there a possibility now? But, but before you answer that question, there were some people asking about speed bumps and how they can acquire speed bumps. And Ms. Griswold was at the meeting, and he, he actually pulled up the website that people can go to and, and fill out the form and ask for the speed bumps. So I, I, I would like to know, can it be done, and have, you know, those requests been coming in?
Things and requests have come in in the past. All of City Engineer Fraser and our traffic engineers here, here as well, speak to that.
Yes, we've had two requests for traffic calming on Richland Road, one in 2019 and one in early 2024. We have conducted the speed study and have submitted the petition to the requister, and we have not received it back. It was just over the 85th percentile speed, which, which warranted the traffic calming, but like I said, we haven't received the petition back.
So the petition back means that they need a percentage of the people that are impacted. You, you give them a map that says of these addresses, which is mainly the people that just directly abut Richland Road in this case. So they need a percentage, so I can get with you and let you know who that is, and if you want to work on them, we can bump them as well. It's, it's somebody who requested it, we need them to get their petition piece done. And that means it would come before you. If they get enough signatures of the property owners that are impacted by it, then it comes for you for a vote. And so I'll clarify that there's some confusion on Richland Road itself. It appears as an arterial road in our manuals, which means it's not eligible. However, this portion of Richland is partially owned by the state of Alabama, which puts it in a gray area. So rightfully so, the staff is, is acting as if this is a local street, and it meets our policy. So they're doing everything they can to work with the residents to make this happen, but we typically require that the residents, you know, who are most impacted because they have to live by it, get enough signatures to do that, so we can try to run that down.
Okay, and I, and I make sure that the people understood that there is another development coming right on Richland Road too, across Shook Jordan. So that's, that's also is going to, you know, impact traffic and the safety of people just getting from, from Richland Road to that new development, which also has commercial development that's going to be going on along with housing. So it's going to be pretty congested there. So I just, you know, just want to make sure that it's, it's safe for people to drive, and do we, do the citizens need to go ahead and put that in before the, those development come, or do, do they need to wait, or?
Ma'am, that tends to come at, at our expense. Is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
So that will come at our, if they get the petition filed that comes before you, and then that basically, Dan Ballard in Public Works is a really generous guy, and that comes out of his budget. Oh, okay.
But then we need it.
So we just need to get the petition far enough along, we can bump the person that is the requister, but we may also have you reach out to some folks and make sure we're getting that moved along. Because we ask that the neighborhood that wants it goes door to door and works with their own neighbors. That's been our longstanding policy.
Yeah, well, I can do that. I got all the time in the world.
Okay.
What was the date of the last request?
It's at early '24.
Early in '24.
Okay, the folks we talked with at Councilwoman Taylor's meeting, I guess there's about five property owners on that stretch of road. At least two are represented here in the back by Mr. Palmer. The others all have indicated that they were also willing. So hopefully, everybody will get those applications in.
We don't need an application in, it's already in, it's in progress, so a petition that has to be signed by the, the property owners is already back out to somebody in the neighborhood.
Okay, you're supposed to be, what, 28, 24 to 48 hours, they're supposed to be notified so they can proceed?
No, 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 there's a petition for traffic calming.
Right, and then they, yeah, but it, they're supposed to receive a reply according to the website.
No, no, reply from us. They've already, we've done all that, we've done all the studies. We, we say it, it meets the criteria. We just need them to sign the petition so that we can put it on the agenda.
So someone already has the petition?
Yes, ma'am.
In the neighborhood?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So that's what I'm saying, is we're going to reach back out to them. Meanwhile, I'll tell you who that is, and you can reach back out to them as well, and we'll coordinate.
Oh, I'm glad you said that, so that means that everybody don't have to go online now and fill out their form?
No, no, they don't need to fill anything out, we've already got all that, somebody already did that for you. We've already done the study, it meets our criteria, so it's fully eligible to come before the council as soon as the petitions are signed by the appropriate amount of people.
Okay, and my next concern, and we also talked about it at the meeting, the, the housing development on, on Judd Avenue. And I, I know the audience can't see the drawings, but it's going to be exactly, how many houses, Mr. Palmer?
16.
16 houses, okay, and where are these houses are located, coming down Judd, and then there's a road that turn, is that called Judd also?
No, it's a private street, so.
It's a private street.
Yeah, so it's essentially just a parking lot.
So that does not go back off into Dunsford?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, that's a dead end in there, it's just, it's just for the development.
I just said, I ride this street, I guess I hadn't. I, I thought it came back out on Dunsford. There is a road that come back out on Dunsford from Piper Glen, right?
There is from Piper Glen, but these two don't attach, and as Pastor Griggs said, it's, you know, it's just a vacant piece of property at the moment.
Okay, so on that private property, Piper Glen is on the opposite side of this development?
Yeah, correct, yeah, to the east.
Okay. Okay, so all of these 16 houses were actually parked on that private property?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so now, when you're going down Judd and you got houses, so we got one, two, three, four, I guess, six in a row, and then you got six behind it. So they're parked, the, the, the ones that's sitting in the back of that were actually parked in the front of the ones in the front of.
Yeah, oh yeah, so, so the parking is deliberately split, that's kind of, that's called out by the zoning ordinance and the design of cottage housing? So the green spaces clustered together, and then the parking is clustered together, and then they're separate. And so if you notice, the, all the houses are facing the green space in the middle, and that's kind of what makes them cottage housing.
The front doors all face the green space, and the back doors either face the parking lot or trees.
Yeah. And so then the parking has to be separated from it, and so that's, this, this is, this is called out in the zoning ordinance, and it has to be designed this way. So the, the parking has to be separated from the cottage housing, and then the parking is allocated. There's two spaces per, per dwelling unit.
The goal of this is for them to share a common green space as, as a yard. It's, in essence, we've got a few of these in other parts of Auburn.
You know, I, I guess if I, if I bought lot number 23, and so I gotta park, and I'm talking about in the back, just says lot 23, and I park in the back, so I gotta park my car in the front of this complex. So if it's raining, or I got a bad knee or whatever, and I get out my car and it's raining, so I, I gotta go down the sidewalk, and I gotta actually walk up another sidewalk to another sidewalk to my house. So, so the green space, there was no way that you could put the parking for those cars in the, for, for the houses in the back. And I, and I understand that the back of these houses is, would be on the, if you put it parking spaces in the back, that would be on their church property.
Yeah, and so, and so they could do that. That just wouldn't be cottage housing development. And so this is, so the type of housing that they chose here dictates that they designed it this way. And so also, this cottage housing was explicitly called on the Northwest Auburn plan of what would be resembled and what would be wanted for future development. And so that, that's why there was such support from staff for this particular design.
Okay, so what is this space between the, the commercial development and the houses? I see, is that a parking lot?
Yes, yes, yes. So that is the parking for the commercial. And so on, on the, on the visuals that you have, it doesn't have the topography, but there's significant grade change in between where the residential is to where the commercial is, and so those are actually going to be steps that people are gonna have to walk up to. It's not gonna be drivable for someone to drive across.
Yeah, so the green strip between the units that are, you know, facing a different direction, is that you're at a different grade, it's lower?
Yeah.
And so they'll have to walk. They can't drive their cars. They'll have to walk up to the commercial, different, different grades.
Okay, one other thing. Okay, so I'm turning off of Rich, Richland Road going down Judd. So this first, this first house right here, okay, there's a sidewalk right there, and I guess leading up to that house. So now, on Judd Avenue, you, there's no way that people can park there. Is that gonna be a no parking? Because I would, you know, if I, if I bought that house there, I would want to park right there in front of them.
Parking's gonna be allowed unless you guys don't allow it. Unless that request comes through, it's public street, parking is allowed unless the city council, as you did earlier, deems it no parking. Some of that comes with the recommendation of the city engineer, the people in the area, or public safety. Just depends.
So parking allowed with parking spaces, or just parking just allowed?
On street, parking allowed, not marked spaces on the street. That's citywide. That's not just here.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
You can enter the commercial area off of Richland Road. Is that correct?
Correct.
Then you can park by unit number 13, I think it is, on the other side of that parking lot from the commercial. In other words, you can park in the commercial and then walk up some steps to your.
Well, but that'll be up to Mr. Palmer and how he manages that, or the eventual owner, if he doesn't own it, as to whether or not they'll allow the residential folks to park in their commercial. The required residential parking is at the, the bottom of the site.
Yep, correct. Yep, on the, yep, along the east, eastern boundary of it. I, I think they're actually overparked about two to four spaces.
Anyone else? So the study done on Richland Road for traffic calming, I'm assuming it's just this portion right here, not across Shook Jordan?
Correct, and thank you for the clarification. Across Shook Jordan is considered an arterial road, no question about it, and is not eligible.
And is this one lot of record, or one, or is it just, or is it gonna be fee simple lots for these cottage houses?
No, 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 no. So, so we went back and forth about that a lot. So the setbacks wouldn't work if this was going to be fee simple, so this is an MUD, and so there's gonna be one lot with all of these lots on it, and I think kind of, I guess in the actual design, it's gonna be three. So the cluster up top is gonna be the, those 12, and the bottom four is gonna be another lot, but it's gonna be an MUD, just from a setback standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
And with the commercial, how many, and this may be a, a question for Mr. Palmer, and I think, I know you answered it at our meeting, but how many, um, commercial spots are, are we talking about?
Fifty-five commercial parking spots.
No, 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 I ain't talk, I'm talking about, if you get businesses in here, how many buildings, how many?
It depends on the unit mix. Could, could be anywhere between five to eight different tenants, somewhere in there.
So we're driving everybody crazy right now, because he's not on a microphone, so everybody tuning in. He's saying, could be five to eight units? Yep, sorry, Andrew, but it's a little easier. Everybody's tuning in, can't hear you nor on the radio, so sorry about that.
I, I think it's gonna be anywhere between five to eight units. The goal in the commercial is, is we'll most likely leave one building unbuilt until we get the exact tenant. There's some people, there's a couple of, of users that we're going after that could use three to 5,000 square feet, so we want to leave one of the buildings available for them. And then the other building, I would expect a normal box to be roughly 1,200 or so square feet, so I'd say six to eight, maybe nine users in there, just depending.
So when, when you start building, are you gonna build the cottages, or you gonna start the cottages in the commercial, or?
Look, looking to start the cottages first.
Anybody good? Any other questions for Mr. Palmer? All right, I think this time.
Well, I, I, I just want to thank you for also coming out and speaking with the community and enlightening everybody on what's actually coming to Richland Road. And if you notice, we didn't have people coming tonight, because I think all the questions was asked at that meeting. So I think if anybody was in denial of this project, I think they would have showed up tonight, so I'm ready to vote.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. All right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
All right. Item 10B authorizes a tax payment extension from December 31st, 2024 to December 31st, 2025 for IPEX USA Manufacturing Incorporated, formerly known as Touchstone Precision Incorporated, due to supply chain issues for property located at 239 Technology Parkway.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item 10C1 authorizes the execution of the fiscal year 2025 Emergency Response Rescue and Ambulance Service Agreement with East Alabama Healthcare Authority, doing business as East Alabama EMS LLC in the amount of $447,781.97.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the House?
Is this an increase, or is this consistent with last year, or is it?
Director Matthews.
It's a $37,258.97 increase.
And that $447,000 is our obligation?
Correct. It's a multi-jurisdiction agreement.
chaired by the three government entities.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item 10C2 authorizes a design contract with Sane Associates Incorporated for a 1.64 mile section of the outer loop road from Richland Road to Mrs. James Road in the amount of $1,510,200.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, this is going to go to Sane Associates. Was this competed?
Um, it's professional services. We do not have to compete it, and Sane has done our outer loop study, our most recent outer loop study, so we stayed with the same firm. They also designed Will Beekner Parkway. So yeah, professional services, we do not have to go out for, and this is an area of expertise for them. There are several firms in the state that do large projects like this, and this is one of them.
Did they come in on, on budget for the Will Beekner Parkway?
For, for the design.
For the design, for this comparable effort?
From my recollection, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Is, when we have the design work already completed, does this allow us to go and, when we're seeking federal dollars, does this help us in that request?
Both state and federal, we're, we're seeking on this, and, and other sections, and some of you asked some questions during our budget work sessions about it as well. And that's the important thing. We've got to get plans done. We're signaling right now that the city's willing to spend money to try to proceed with this, and so yes, it, it makes a big difference if the plans are done and we know what's ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Sane.
This study is from Richland Road up to Mrs. James Road. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is a full design up to Mrs. James Road.
Right. And the dotted line on our last picture shows it going below, but that, that is not included in what we're looking at tonight.
So there's a, there's a couple of things. Your very last picture is an outer loop. This is showing the major street plan, and so that's, that's just giving you a better indication. Our other map, drawn by Sane on the previous page, if you see the white outlined area, dashed white outline, that is the section that's being designed, but this gets turned in all directions and hard for you to see, so that's why that's on there. It's 1.64 miles.
And these are all brand new roads. There's no, we're not using any existing roads in this study.
Just a little bit of tie into Mrs. James Road, and a little bit of tie into the existing Richland Road, right at the wastewater treatment plant that is not currently in operation.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Those are all, all the items of business we have for you this evening.
At this time, we'll open Citizens Open Forum. This your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We ask that your comments be directed to the city council, and please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak to the council.
Good evening. Red Bear, 1518 VFW Road. I have a couple of questions about the 1571 property that's being built on VFW Road. I want to revisit it. I think that tax burden that we're gonna be creating by building that 3,500 square foot home in our neighborhood, is gonna be a tough thing for us to deal with coming in the future, given the nature that our neighborhood has been around for over 100 years. We started that neighborhood in 1948. We want to try to do the, the historical preservation. We're gonna start that process. I don't know where it's gonna go, however, I'd like to think that you guys would take that in consideration, because nobody in that neighborhood is gonna be able to afford to live there if we build 14 units there at $500,000, $600,000. It's gonna take everyone out. So I think you guys need to, Max, I think you need to be thinking about that. That's our ward, right? I want you to be looking at that, and think about that preservation of that property, not just because somebody want to build something or grow something, but the fact that we've been there and we want to stay there. We, we don't want our property taxes to go up. We don't want land value to go up. We just want to live. And I, and I don't see that happening across Auburn. Every single neighborhood that used to be considered what we call a black neighborhood has been eaten up, eaten up by progress. The machine is just eating it. And you know, not everybody can afford to live at this rate. I, I know people are okay with that. They think, hey, we can build something. We want to annex a whole lot of land. We just want to do a lot of stuff. But the, the other citizens on the other side of that track, those people can't afford to live in those homes that you guys are building? None of them. And if you start building them in our neighborhood, they're not gonna be able to live in them either. So I'd like to just say, we need to take that in consideration. We need to heavily look at that. We need to heavily look at this machine that's eating, totally taking advantage of every single individual that's a citizen in this city. We're here to serve all the citizens, not a few citizens, not a portion of the citizens, but all these citizens, okay? Because at some point, the citizens start to fight back, and when they start to fight back, chaos begins. So let's try to all figure out how we can live here in Auburn. It's one of the nicest cities in the world. You heard the lawyer say, you guys got a great rating, but you gotta be thinking about the rest of the people too.
Who'll be next?
Good evening. My name's Daniel Carlson. I live at 1902 Yarborough Farms Boulevard and Auburn University Club. I'm here with two of my neighbors. Uh, it has come to our attention that the city of Auburn is requesting Harris Oil to widen the sidewalk in front of six homes along Yarborough Farms Boulevard. I believe it's for a greenway. The current sidewalk is four feet, and they're wanting to make it eight feet wide, four additional feet into our property, covering up the, the 10-foot easement, utility easement that y'all have on our properties right now. I don't see anywhere on our drawings or anything of that nature, an eight-foot sidewalk. There's no other eight-foot sidewalk in front of any other home in that neighborhood, and the expansion in front of this will not look like the rest of the neighborhood. We'd like more dialogue with the city and Harris Oil about the issue, and requesting a hold to construction until a matter is investigated by city council or other appropriate entities.
Have y'all talked to anyone from the city at this point in time?
We have reached out to Brad Griffith, and we've talked with our HOA, but I, they don't have any, any standing in this, because I don't believe the city has turned the, the road over to the HOA yet. Our, the HOA or development has not been given to the city yet. I'm not sure where the process is right now.
Okay, all right. We've got your name and address, and we've heard you, and we'll follow back, somebody will follow back up with you, okay?
Great. Thank you.
Scott Cummings, our Executive Director of Development Services, will get more contact information, our Director of City Relations would, but she's filling in as a city clerk tonight, so Scott's right here. He'll come and see you in just a minute.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
My name is Ronnie Jackson, 1515 VFW Road. And I'm a part of Rice Mill Road down in VFW. I'm, I'm not the one that's spitting and nothing, but I'm with Mr. Perry or whatever. About the speed bump game, we need some speed bumps in our neighborhood. The traffic coming out of Grove Hill, when they leave Grove Hill, they come up and out and put up the sign, because we got kids in the neighborhood. We need some speed bump down there. Yesterday, they running like, got out of here, coming down, we got screw busters, kids or pan in the neighborhood. We need some speed bump down there, bad. I don't put up one sign. They don't pay that no attention.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson. We had a discussion earlier about speed bumps, and if you can hang around a little bit after the meeting, maybe we can have a further conversation with you about how you go, about doing that, okay? Who'll be next?
Good evening. Martha Schamp, 307 Camellia Drive. Auburn, Auburn Public Library has bought books filled with homosexual vice, even for our children. Homosexuality is a grave sin. 1 Corinthians 6:9 says, surely you know the unjust will never come into possession of the kingdom of God. Make no mistake, no fornicator or idolater, none who are guilty of either adultery or homosexuality. Our thieves, our grabbers, our drunkers, our slanderers, our swindlers will possess the kingdom of God. Such were some of you, Paul tells us, but you have been through the purifying waters. You've been dedicated to God. You have been justified through the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and the spirit of our God, end quote. So thank God there's forgiveness for all of us, but let us not return to sin or promote it. But the library books lead kids straight into sin. Why? Is it to justify their own, the author's own? Jehovah God condemns homosexuality as unnatural vice. It destroys the soul. Yet our library has bought hundreds and hundreds of books for youth promoting this perversion. Here's some titles. A kid's book about being transgender. A kid's book about being transgender. Identifying as transgender. Peyton's Pronoun Party. My Own Way: Celebrating Gender Freedom for Kids. True You: A Gender Journey. Gender Identity for Kids, a book about finding yourself. UBU: The Everybody Book. The LGBTQ Inclusive Guide for Kids. The LGBTQ Inclusive Guide for Kids. But this is what the sovereign Lord says. Leviticus 18:22, "For a man to lie with a man is abomination." And we now have AIDS and HIV to prove it. Jesus Christ himself says about an unwritten city he faced in his day, he said with his own words, "Truly I tell you, it will be more bearable for Sodom and Gomorrah on the day of judgment than for that town." And modern archaeologists are picking up sulfur balls by the thousands on the site of Sodom to this day, 2024. Thank you.
Who will be next?
Good evening, my name is Harriet Huggins. I live at 631 South Dean Road. I'm constantly reminded that libraries are a cornerstone of the community dedicated to serving the information needs of everyone. They collect and maintain, make valuable a wide variety of information resources representing the range of human thought and experience. With such a broad spectrum of ideas and information available, it's inevitable that people will encounter resources that they believe to be inappropriate for their family. Just because one enters a library does not mean you'll not see something you don't like. Libraries have diverse collections with resources from many points of view. And a library's mission is to provide access to information for all users. Each family has a right to determine which library resources are acceptable for its own children. But individuals must also realize they must afford the same rights to all other parents. The citizens of Auburn consist of taxpayers who are white, black, brown, gay, straight, Christian, Jews, Muslim, even atheist, people from all backgrounds and walks of life. No one portion of the community should dictate what the rest of the citizens have access to. Just because they don't want to read it or see it, it doesn't give one the right to deny others or demand its relocation. If we remove or relocate books with LGBTQ or sexual health content, what message is that sending to our community members? Why is one belief system any more important than others? Parents have the responsibility to monitor their own children's reading and nobody else's. Regardless of one's belief about the topic of book content and location, think about this. No one on the right side of history has ever been on the side of censorship and banning books. Hate and fear disguised as moral outrage have no place here. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
My name is Sarah Collins, 875 Cohaba Drive. I wanted to echo what Ms. Huggins just said. We have an excellent library, and I am very appreciative of all of your support for the library staff and for curating a really excellent collection of books. The, the variety of topics that you can find at the library is outstanding. And harping on one small portion of books in the face of all the good that the library is doing is a shame to me. So I just wanted to support what the library is doing and echo what Ms. Huggins has said. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close Citizens Communications. Mr. Counsel, you want to have any follow-up comments?